Good evening. Good evening to all those that are here and those that are on Zoom. I'd like to welcome. Notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the Board of Directors of the District to be held at 105 Port Road, Port Isabel, Texas, on July 8, 2020, at the hour of 5:30 PM for consideration of the business of the agenda below. This notice is posted at the Office of the District on July 2, 2020, at 2:00 PM in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551-041-551-050, not less than 72 hours prior to the time of the said meeting. We do have the presence of a quorum present in the boardroom. We have Mr. Houston, myself, Mr. Friedman, and Mr. Avalos. And on Zoom joining us, I see Dr. Lalan. And is that Mr. Starkey? In the far left, on my far left, Mr. Starkey? Okay, so we do have the presence of a quorum. If I may please have everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and all of its blessings. Keep us ever mindful of our responsibility to serve our community. Bless us with wisdom and guide us in our decisions so that we may be better stewards of your gifts. We ask this through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you. Like to move along to Item 3, Invitation to the Audience for Public Comments. Staff, board members, Zoom members, comments, suggestions. Welcome, Mr. Balvinos.
Good evening, Victor Balvinos, resident of Port Isabel. Just want to let you know that I got an alert from Water Smart that I had a leak. It ended up not being one leak, but two, saving me quite a bit of money. So if we haven't signed up for Water Smart, I encourage everyone to do so by going to Laguna Mile Water District, LMWD.org. Thank you.
Things we like to hear.
I agree. I got saved by it this weekend. I had a, the overflow pump at my pool was broken and I didn't know about it. And I was using 1,000 gallons an hour, so I was happy to get that emailed.
Thank you. Anyone else before we move along? Thank you. Let's move along to Item 4, Consider and Discuss for Possible Approval of the Minutes of the Regular Meeting from June 24, 2020. Motion for approval by Mr. Avalos, seconded by Dr. Lalan. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move along to Item 5, General Manager's Report. Carlos was zooming in. Is he available or?
He's not on the line yet.
He's on the line? Why don't we go ahead and move to 6, Director of Operations Report, and we'll come back and revisit.
Chairman, members of this board, the report for June is, as you can see, it's compared to last June of 2019. It is considerably less, about 128 callouts less this year than last year. A lot of them had to do with the meter change that we were doing last year, working on meter boxes, also some informational and pulling out meters. Overall, it's pretty much the same, other than water tap. We have a few more water taps this month in June than we had last year in the month of June. That's in the distribution report. And the collections report, it was pretty even as far as the number of calls. We did have preventive maintenance. It was 10, we had 10 less preventive maintenance this year than we did last year. And lift stations work. Of course, the lift stations now, I'm trying to report those in a separate report, which is the one after this, one after collections. But you can see that the collections report is pretty much even as far as that's concerned, last year and this year, as far as the number of calls. And the other part of the report that Mr. Houston requested, I did implement and start reporting the pre-treatment and lift station issues and work that they do on there. We started off with contacts and new food service establishment. Oh, by the way, these are, this is about the last 10 days in June, since I had done a couple of reports in June for lift stations. But the numbers here have, pretty much was the last 10 days in June. And the grease interceptors that they inspected, they inspected two of them.
Is that a grease trap?
Yes, sir. It's a grease trap or interceptor.
I never heard of the term.
I hadn't either actually, until Frankie looked it up.
Well, it's a different type. It's the interceptors, the plastic box thing.
And then it was where they had to prevent, did some preventive maintenance and they added Microsoft and the lift stations. Also preventive maintenance on lift station property. That's where they cut the grass around or the main defenses that's around the lift station to keep anybody out from there. And troubleshooting lift station pumps, that is, lift stations that indicate they have high amperages, they go in there and look at it, or for some reason that it stopped working, so they pull it out and look at that. And then electrical issues, those are usually signed off by alarm, so they go out there, electricians, maybe going out there on the call at night or something like that, as the lift station stops working and the alarm goes off. And then they cleaned the manhole, which is pretty much the last 10 days, as I said, the 34 activities that they provided. Any questions on any of these?
I just had a follow-up question really for, we saw one last, at our last meeting about they had the cement covers on it.
Yes.
Did that get addressed?
They're in the process of resolving that.
Okay. He did send out a letter to, that was the letter that he sent out?
Yes. Well, actually, no, that's another one. Hello, good afternoon. Francisco was my, I'm in constant contact with that particular food service establishment, and they're trying to get it resolved. Expenditure, I know, being one of the main issues, but they gave them a timeline, so hopefully, I'm just waiting to see if they meet that timeline. But I am keeping tabs on that one.
It's a dangerous one, so.
Yeah, it's very, very dangerous. It's more so safety. I'm keeping tabs on that one.
Thank you. Well, in that letter that he did send out, that dealt with the inlet tenoplets and the interceptor where the grease was just flowing directly from going in and going directly into the sewer line.
Yeah, there's a lot of underground grease interceptors. They're supposed to have a vertical pipe in there, comes in, and there's a vertical pipe which lets it in, then there's a back wall or whatever. And then on the outlet, there's supposed to be another vertical pipe, and then the horizontal pipe, which, those vertical pipes serve as purposes, it prohibits the grease just from passing through. So.
Yeah, that impact pipe is lower.
Yeah, so in the photographs that I took and the examinations or the inspections, you can literally see the flow just coming in and going out. So in accordance with the service policy, just issued them a warning letter and gave them a timeline. Hopefully they, they meet that timeline. Everything, and I'm doing all this with the guidance of our services.
Can I ask what the timeline was?
I believe that one I gave them six months, not coming up, but 60 days. And I'm thinking that all that happens is, they probably had a backup in the food service establishment. Plumber came in, went into the restaurant, tried to get that blockage out. And since these pipes are not under pressure, they're gravity pipes, more than likely they're just fitted on. So more likely they're doing jet or just push them off. I've seen some, or a couple, or one actually, that the pipes actually just sit down there. They had just gotten it pumped out, and I see the pipe down there. So I let that service, food service establishment know that their pipe is down there, that they need to make arrangements to catch it, or just replace it.
And is everybody receiving, I mean, you and your instructions or whatever, pretty well? Is that going very well?
Yes, I try to touch base with them personally. Of course, keeping in mind social distancing, distancing, our face coverings. And I just have a, basically like a 101 with them. I've encountered a lot of brand-new managers, and which, or they're oblivious to the grease trap being there, the grease interceptors. So I just give them a 101 on it, and I basically, I give them a packet, an informational packet, basically. The packet consists of our introduction letter, introducing ourselves, you know, the pre-treatment department, what we're looking at. Not too long of a letter, just, you know, brief and to the point. Copy of the actual, chapter four of the wastewater service policy. Some fog, basic information that you can get online. In other words, like kitchen best management practices. In other words, scrape the plate over the trash can as opposed to washing it down over your sink or whatnot.
Make reference to TCEQ regulations so that they know that it's not just us, but it's coming from.
It's a state mandate.
Yes, sir. Which you can go on TCEQ and basically our service policy basically emulates the grease ordinance.
That's the most important one to share and stress is that, you know, so people think, oh, it's just the water district.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me make sure that.
Yeah, we, I stand there and discuss it with them. I welcome them when I do open them. If they would like to see it, a lot of managers are very curious. And they're like, yeah, I want to see, you know, what is it that gets pumped out every month, or every two months, or every three months? And I get a bill for it because I've come across certain managers that they budget for this particular item, but they're not out there looking at them vacuuming it out. So I just, I just give them some advice. I go, you know, you're paying for this service. I would want to, you know, it would be nice if you go out there and make sure they are evacuating the gallons that the manifest says that they're vacuuming. Because the manifest will relay that information, the capacity of the tank, what they vacuum out. So I'm trying to inform them as much as I can on everything. And I tell them, day or night, email me, call me, that's what phones work. I give them all my information, any questions, concerns, thoughts, anything in there I can help them with. I make myself available.
Yeah, and basically with this deal. As the inlet, where they're coming in, it's higher than when the water goes out. So that wall between the inlet and the outlet, that's holding the grease, since it flows, it's holding the grease there, and the water is the one that ships out, goes out into the sewer.
Yeah, that's why I mentioned that diagram that we have, which is really a good educational tool to leave with them, to give them a general idea of how it's supposed to work. Not that they have to build it that way, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, someone?
Thank you.
Thank you. Carlos, are you with us?
Yeah, signed out. I'm trying, I'm trying to get him back in right now.
Okay. Let's move along to Item 7, District Engineers' Report.
All right, good evening. Hopefully, everybody's doing well. Just to dive right into it, the first item here is the anti-buoy wastewater treatment plant discharge for the Southside Island Burning Center. And as far as the status on that one, I have a draft work plan from grease and nickels to, that's really setting up our testing protocol, so we can get a variance in place in our permit to raise that copper limit, make it less restrictive. And, you know, the only, we have a one-page resolution in place with the Burning Center that really doesn't provide a lot of detail. So I know we may want to work on getting something, you know, with a little more detail in place. I mean, I don't know, Brian, if you want to provide any input on the anti-buoy, you know, discharge or coordinating with anything with the Burning Center, or, you know, if there's any input to add on the liability aspects.
I haven't spoken with them yet, but I think the first thing to do would be to meet with them and to speak with them about our concerns and see what their input is before we start, you know, figuring out any kind of, you know, action we might take, you know, in order to protect ourselves there.
Do you have something on the schedule, Brian?
Do I have something on the schedule?
To meet with them, yes, sir.
No, I don't yet.
Okay.
I'm happy to work with Charles or whoever and set up a meeting and go down there and kind of explain our issue anytime.
That's a good, that's a very good idea.
And as far as expenses with, it seems like, it looks like as far as this copper limit, it can be added with a variance request and included in the permit. So we're catching it at the right time to get a variance in our, in our permitting process. So I think we're catching that at the right point, so we don't put ourselves in a bind with having something too restrictive on the copper limit, be able to double that. And then so, of course, the expense that we've had between the lab work and grease and nickels, you know, for that process, I'm getting that variance in our permit, has been about 40, 45,000. So that's, you know, the kind of dollars we put into this point.
So far.
Yeah. So that's, that's kind of where things stand today. All right, so I guess moving on to the next one, our next bullet here is the annexation of Platte of Laguna Vista Echo Park Subdivision. At this point, we're looking at a three-lot subdivision, of course, with the Echo Tourism Center that's already under construction. It's 10 acres. Lot 1 is going to be retained by Town of Laguna Vista for 12.89 acres, which currently they own the entire subdivision. And then a third lot is going to be dedicated specifically for a lift station that will accept into the district. That'll be built through economic development contract with the Town of Laguna Vista. And so at this point, we're trying to finalize language for our signature block, being that we're in a unique case where this is subdivision outside of our district boundary, but it's still going to be getting service for water and sewer. And for that lot one, we don't know what kind of development is going to be coming at some point in the future. And so I guess at this point, we're trying to figure out what, what do we want to, do we want to process a plat, a head annexation, or do we want to get some form of annexation in place right along with plating the platte? I mean, the platte, you know, it's just kind of, I guess it's sort of a general case of, if we want to consider the idea for the town's lot as far as maybe waiving fees for their development, or do we want to have any kind of language in place when we review a petition for consideration? It's kind of a general.
I think you had mentioned the last time that you would rather wait and to see what kind of development comes in there. You had suggested that the last time.
Yeah, I'm advising, since we don't know what kind of development, you know, we don't have a budget to establish.
That sounds reasonable to me.
You need to proceed with the platter.
Right.
Right.
Right. On the 10.2.
Side agreement or something.
Yeah, I think there'll be language in the plat for the slot one, that at the time of development, they'll have to proceed with our annexation process, which will explain that that means abiding water rights, abiding into our water plant or sewer plant. And then that would be, you know, addressed in some kind of certification we need to draft up and provide, so we can get this plat finalized. Okay, so, so then, I don't know, Brian, any other input to add on to that, or?
No, I mean, we've, they've sent us, make sure I'm not muted. Okay. They've sent us some language that they proposed for the certification, but it, you know, it involves us certifying that there are existing water and sewer facilities, which there aren't yet, so we've got to change that language.
Would they count?
And some other languages to, like, the owner's statement, which has them certifying that we agree to something. And I think it just needs to be rewritten, what's on the plat, as far as what we certify at this point. Because there aren't any lines in the ground yet. We can't certify that it's been constructed in compliance with the Water Code until it is. We could certify that the designs as presented, you know, are in compliance, but that's something more like, I think, the engineer would certify. So we've got to think about what it is that we'd be certifying on this plat, how to write the language on it, which is what we had a conversation about, a little bit about today amongst some of it. That's what I'm working on. I've been reviewing some other plats that have similar language. A lot of them are from Adado County, which don't usually have the Water District signing on. So I'm going to look at some others from Cameron County to see what the standard type of language is when we have this sort of a situation. And I've been doing a little bit of research on that, but I haven't quite finished yet. Just so we can get our signature block on there correctly.
Are we on timeline or keeping up with, are we?
Yeah, I mean, really, the critical path is the ADA contract with Alondo Cruz, the engineer. So they, they're responsible, the town is responsible for building the lift station for the, for the Echo Tourism Center's sewer line to connect. And then as far as the water line, they just, they're just, they're tapped to our 24 mains, so it's pretty straightforward. So it's really getting that lift station built is the critical path between the town and their engineer who's Alondo Cruz.
Moving along.
Right, so, yeah, the next item, it's just, I wanted to bring up, it's more of an update on the Texas Water Development Board project, lift station rehab. You see on the whiteboard, there's a, I kind of cleaned it up a little bit, adding dates in red markings. Do you have that exhibit off of the city? Well, basically, to make a long story short, is that we have an engineering feasibility report that has just been submitted to the Texas Water Development Board for review and approval. And then we've sent all the agency coordination letters to get environmental clearance. And once those two items are approved, which we expect to be done over in the next couple of weeks, we can release the design funds, which are currently in this room. And then, and then once design's done as a whole, which is lift stations, that was the original part of the job, and then all of these pipeline improvements that we've added at the Talon, which needed its separate environmental clearance, we still need more time to finish the design of those, all those pipeline jobs. But the design for the lift stations are, you know, ready to go, out for bid and in construction. And so, so basically, what we're proposing with lift station one, we're down to one half failing pump at that site. And to do the repairs, we have to start a bypass operation, which is a major expense. And rather than going through and around repairs, when we're so close to having a full set of plans to take to construction, we're proposing to start newspaper advertisement on July 19 and award the construction job strictly for the Vista Lift Stations 1 and 37, for bring that construction contract for consideration, award to our board on August 26. And then, and then basically, that's running about three months ahead of, you know, design approval for the entire set of plans. So, you know, with that case, we're essentially using general fund at risk for three months. And then we'd submit the entire project to Water Development Board, so when that construction escrow is released, we can ourselves bag. So we're just kind of bringing that to your attention, making sure we're okay to proceed in that manner to facilitate the disbursement.
So we need a resolution to do that, as far as the money coming back into the general fund?
I thought we did just agree.
Okay, we did one the last time.
I mean.
Yeah, we did one the last time for, well, and.
Well, we did a reimbursement agreement, and for soft costs. I mean, we already have an agreement in place with, with Texas Water Development Board, right? So as long as we're following their federal disadvantaged business enterprises procurement requirements, which we have everything in the contract language to follow their terms and their requirements. So once we demonstrate that we followed their procurement requirements correctly, then it would get released more or less in October, you know, when we have the entire design package put together. So I mean, we're just jumping ahead three months at risk, so we will, because we have, we fill your lift station one in Dan.
And tell me again where this lift station one is at?
Lift station one is at Mesquite.
Right.
And so it's right there on Mesquite and Taylor, right on in the old part of Laguna Vista.
Is it where that, where the street's kind of wide there?
Yeah, I think so.
Is it the one that's kind of pulling out of the ground?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the site.
Yes.
Yeah, we're down at one pump and.
That one does need work.
Yeah, it's a mess.
Yes, I agree.
And so that's, you know, as long as, suppose we're getting nods, we're okay to proceed if you're that plan.
Yep.
And so that, I guess that wraps up the accelerated construction schedule. And we've already made our submittals to Texas Water Development Board. And we've sent them the amended grease and nickels contracts that were approved back in February. And we're in the process of revising our budget with Texas Water Development Board, so we can pull this escrow release for the design funds to cover, it's already a contract with grease and nickels. So that's, that's what's going to happen. Okay, yeah, Francisco, anyone here?
I gotta get off my chest. They're not all sitting there now. I want to see them. We, that lift stations and fire needs, right? On our behalf, we have tried everything except confined space entry, which would be extremely hard because of the lift station two pumps into that one. And then you have two big gravity mains. I think lift station 38 also comes into that one, which is located in the Gulf Force. And it's got two big gravity mains that come in as well. One pump is, is basically, the guide rail fell, the pump's still attached to it, it's still pumping, I don't want to say maybe 60, 40, just throwing a number out there. Some still going through the pipe and some just circulating within the well. On the other guide rail that is intact, we did, we did install a pump that we had there in the shop. We had our electrician check it out, checked it out. Electricity is fine. We checked it with pump. We turned it on above ground just to see if it, if them ever turned. It turned. We installed it. That's my plan B. So we, on the one that John, we are doing everything we can. And I appreciate, you know, anything, anything that is approved for us, you know, for the lift stations. But we are doing that. But just so you know, that pump I put as an emergency pump, it's not coupling correctly to the base down there. I would imagine that base is in the same condition as that pump that fell. The bases are really messed up. So, but we still have it sitting there. And the event that the one that is running right now fails, I'll kick that one on. It'll do the same thing. It'll probably maybe do a 60, 40, or maybe a lesser number. It'll still send some to the pipe and circulate within the well, which, it's not supposed to do that, but our bases down there are really corroded. So, but I do have it there on standby, just in case. It is an old pump. I don't know how long it'll last. It was a repurposed pump. But we did install it, took the time, installed it, checked it out, everything. It pumps. And we have it there. Just in the event that it fails, it's going to act in the same way as the one that's there right now. Just circulating a lot around the, around the well. In other words, it's spewing out the sides. It's not coupling correctly. It's not, it's not sitting flush in the base, the pump and the base. So in the event that the emergency happens, I'll turn it on. But we do turn it on periodically, just to make sure it's not stuck or whatnot. But we are doing everything we can with that for lift station. I know it's in dire need of a lot of help, so I just don't want to, want it to fail and cause the residents any trouble. So I just wanted that John know that.
Thank you very much.
All right, so for the fourth bullet, figured I'd just throw it out there, at least bring to your attention about this funding opportunity announcement. And for Water Smart with Bureau Reclamation, I'm just wondering if y'all have any interest in pursuing something as like a $2 million grant, 50/50 cost share at this time for the either reclaimed water facility or getting a seawater plant, and more or less try to get both of those to see the better option, just to locate a site near Port Isabel.
I think.
With these, not with these, as far as.
Okay. So, so we wouldn't have it strictly for the reclaimed water facility as far as an application, or?
I got a question for Eddie. Eddie, are you familiar with this at all?
With the lift station?
No, with the grant opportunity?
No, this, this Water Smart or, no, I'd be, I mean, I'm just really bringing it up for the first time for discussion.
Oh, okay.
No, we haven't discussed it yet.
No, we haven't discussed it yet.
I guess the question would be, can we come up with a balance?
Yeah.
That's the man who would know.
Well, it takes a couple of years before this gets off the ground, I don't just give you the money right away.
Yeah.
Two years down the road.
Yeah, we're talking about a $7 million job with a $2 million. So I mean, we'd have to come up with about $5 million to get it done.
The subject of reclamation is good and bad. If, if, we've been on this road before and it has, it's a very, way of the future and it's the way all new developments and everything are happening. We'll have to start over with all this, but it's, it's something to more think about.
All right, so, so as far as the way I have in the memo describing the cigarette window stream, we can give it, you know, help us out. I mean, I know Mark Ellison with ID Technology, he wants to get involved, help us out with the application. Well, that would be the seawater aspect, I guess, what direction?
I'd like to learn a little bit more about it, since it's the first time I hear about it.
Yeah.
I don't know anything about what you're talking about. So I wouldn't mind having some more information where I can say, you know what, that's worth pursuing. And by then, I've already talked to the finance director and I've talked to the people that we hired and get some more information other than just making the decision.
I mean, we can schedule a workshop. I mean, you want to do a workshop on the July 27th?
Do a workshop or I can just go and bug everybody individually.
You know, when the bond committee people met, one, on one occasion, they were concerned about or interested in other sources of raw water. And this reclamation process is basically another source of water. So.
But we're talking about reclaiming salt blow?
No, no.
Whole different story.
Okay, they're reused now.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be taking the effluent.
Right.
The sewer plant and put it into advanced treatment to give that our water.
Right. Which is the process that we talked about last time, using a less expensive process to reclaim that water versus seawater.
You recapture about 60% of the water.
That's what the astronauts do.
Yes.
Would we use that for drinking water or would we use that for irrigation water?
It, it would be portable water, it'd be one type system for drinking water.
I don't have a problem with investigating more.
Yeah.
Spending money on it.
Right, and, and we, and my concern is that we might do that if we bring in the engineering company we just recently hired, correct?
What's the timeline on the application?
Oh, yeah, deadline is September 17th, I believe.
I think if, we, we need to have a workshop anyways. I mean, I'm not saying probably the end of August or something, maybe if, if we can, or if not. Workshops are always good to have, it's been a while since we've had one. You know, lots of things to review, at least have to, at least two workshops a year, it's been a while. So if you're going to have a workshop, this is one to review and you have some time to discuss.
Well, do we need a budget workshop?
Yes, well, we're going to be having some upcoming budget workshops, so we can add this on as an agenda item on one of those budget workshops.
So like the first August meeting, more or less, we can do a workshop that time. Now there's a time to finish up. So we can, you know, have.
That's my comment recommendation.
I agree.
All right, I guess that's a step forward and I believe it concludes the engineer report as well, let's seriously get the questions.
Back to item six, excuse me, item five, general manager report, Carlos, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, on the COVID update, we've been hit hard lately, this, this past week, more than any other week. Close families and employees are getting hit with it and especially myself. I'll be out a few more days until I get some negative testing on it. I just tested today, but anyhow, I get some results in about three to four days from today. And what we've been trying to do is make the schedule work where some of the employees are working half of the time and the other half at, at another time, but it hasn't been working good. Mostly it's in the main office, the main office is the one that we're more concerned about. We have insufficient employees to be doing that, so what we'll be working on this coming week is another schedule where we probably have to come back to the board and request some paid time, maybe instead of, like before was 20 hours and 20, maybe just 10 hours instead of the 20. Just employees in the office because the rest are okay, we separated them and they have their own utility truck and we have water leaks that we need to go take care of and we can't afford to separate them on, on the, the employees that are outside on the, on the field. So at this time, we'll be looking into scheduling the main office only, customer service and, and the finance department and possibly HR. But we'll bring back some time, maybe in the next couple of days. And if we have to get a, like an emergency meeting or special meeting, we'll, I'll get with Brian and make sure that we're okay with it. And, and once we have the information, we'll pass it on to the board and see what the board thinks about it. But we do need to separate our employees more than the last time, at, at this time of the season. It's getting pretty scary now. But anyhow, that's, that's part of that COVID-19 report, we'll come back to the board and, and discuss more. I get scheduled with the staff at the main office. And then, any questions on that part? That I can answer or?
Or I can answer too.
Oh, Mary, okay.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Anything else you want to add to that?
Well, I just wanted to add that we will need possibly to change our schedule just in order to protect our employees' health. As Carlos said, we are considering maybe 30 hours or as, as soon as we come up with a schedule. And that's because the, our, the cases are increasing in, in the main office and, and other areas. And we would like to separate employees as much as possible.
Okay, I think that would cover it for right now, Mary, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And I, there's no other questions on that one, on the COVID. The November 2020 elections update, I attached a form that we need to remember. Saturday, July 18th is the, the first day for applicants to, to sign in. And it's on a Saturday, will be closed, so that means that actually on Monday, the 20th would be the day that we're open to accept applicants. Then the next item that I have here is the Texas Water. I've added some information in there because it, it starts next week. It's a virtual zooming type of meeting that we'll be having for Texas Water. And there's information in there, if you have, y'all have any questions, let me know. Let me see, the other one is the Association of Water Board of Directors also, they will be also having the virtual meetings because of the COVID virus also. They will, having all the activities that they normally have, but they'll be through zooming also. So that'll be early part, early part of August when they start moving forward on that. If you have any questions, feel free to call me. And for right now, that's all I have.
Thank you, Carlos.
Yes, sir.
Wish you the best and hope things get well for you and keep your health safe.
Thank you, thank you, yes, appreciate that.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Let's move along then to item eight. Consider removing the table, the following item table at the regular meeting on June 24, 2020. Consider and discuss for possible approval restoring section 1.4.8 disconnection and penalties on late fees corresponding to the service policy for Laguna Madre Water District due to COVID-19. Motion to take off the table by Mr. Avalos. Whereby Mr. Houston, are all those in favor? Are not opposed, motion carries, thank you, let's move along to item nine. Consider and discuss for possible approval restoring section 1.4.8 disconnection and penalties on late fees corresponding to the service policy for Laguna Madre Water District due to COVID-19. Eddie?
So I included in your, in your packet a memo summarizing the, the actions that we've taken to date to, to help our, our customers during this, this time dealing with the coronavirus. Also outlined, I'll just go over that. On June 13th, the PUC guidelines for suspension of disconnections due to non-payment expired along with the recommendation for no late fees. So we have been reaching out to all of our customers who are past due and asking them to make payment arrangements. We currently have many customers who have made payment arrangements. However, we do have some customers who have not responded to our attempts to reach them and have not made any payment. These are all customers who normally wait until they're called by our staff and warned if they don't pay within the next 24 hours, we'll be shutting off their water. That's our normal collection practice. Many people wait until they get this call to pay, while others wait until after they're disconnected to pay. So the suspension of our disconnections for non-payment have led us to simply call people and encourage them to pay. And this worked for some customers and, but not for all. So staff is, is recommending that we, we, the service policy for disconnection due to non-payment be restored. So any, any customer that has made payment arrangements with us or making regular payments of some kind would not be cut off. But we're, we're concerned about that if the outstanding balance gets too large for some of our customers, that they'll not be able to, to pay that off in any reasonable amount of time.
Is also just changed? Sorry, usage just changed?
No, we're not seeing much difference on the, on the consumption side. So, and there's also a risk that some of these customers could abandon their accounts and leave without, without paying. Deposits for most accounts are only $70, so, and that gets refunded after 18 months of repayment history. So balance of more than two months will pass due, will certainly not be recovered by that deposit. And then the, the, the late fees could be done in a, in a separate manner if you want to possibly not restore that at this time or restore them both, both sections of the policy at the same time. That, that's also up for, for discussion. The, the late fees are simply meant to encourage our customers to pay sooner rather than later. So I also included a chart in your, well, it's, it's a table summarizing the, the, the numbers that we're seeing each billing cycle and comparing it, like Mr. Houston had, had asked, a comparison to how things were last year. So you can see cycle three, which is South Padre Island, in May of 2019, had 30 customers with account balances of 24,000, penalties of 3,000 and cutoff charges of 750. So that account balance includes the, the penalties and the cutoff fees. Then the, the, you compare that to this year, that was 58 customers, $8,800 of account balance. So that's an increase of 28 customers and a decrease of 15,000 of account balances.
See, I, I don't understand how that, how that is, how does that, how do you have double the delinquent customers but a third or half of the, of the, of the balances decreased? I don't understand that.
It's because most of the, of the account balance was made up by a few commercial customers. And what we have now is, is, they're all residential customers. It's a lot of, of, of small accounts is what is making up the balance this year. Last year, there was like, I think there was a, a one account that was like 8,000, another account that was like 3,000, and then a couple of accounts that were $1,000. And those were all commercial accounts. This year, what we're seeing is, is a lot of little residential accounts. And then you can look at a month later, the same, the same cycle, so 6/25/19 last year was, was 12 customers, a total account balance of 1,0759. And then you compare that to this year, 47 customers and 4,0960. So what that's telling me is it's the same group of customers, so they're, they're, they're catching up. So that, that is now the account balance is, is, is lower than it was a month ago. But it's, it's higher than this year.
What's your, what's your recommendation? What, what do you want us to do?
So my recommendation would be to restore the, the disconnections for non-payments. And if you want to, we can, we can avoid doing the, the, the late fees, that's something that we can continue to waive. You can waive them, you can put us through a certain point in time, if you want to say for the next two months or through the end of the fiscal year, then through the end of September 30th. Or, or just restore them both.
Quick question, what, what discretion does staff have to waive late fees at their own? For, for given account?
For, for waiving late fees, we, we really don't, the only, the only adjustments that we give to customers are for, we do waive some sewer charges when customers have leaks. And we, we determined that those leaks didn't go down the sewer system, so that's our, our reasoning for being able to give customers a, a, a discount on their, on their bills when they have a leak and will waive some sewer charges.
Sure, I mean, some of this seems like micromanaging from a board perspective. I feel like the staff should have discretion to waive late fees, you know, up to a certain amount, maybe 75 bucks or 100 bucks. I don't think the board should be in the business of handling individual accounts.
It kind of gets political and it kind of gets to, you know, so and so is my friend or so. It kind of, it, what you're saying is correct, but it also, you know, well, so and so got away with this and so and so didn't do this. Creates a lot of, you know.
Yeah, that's exactly why we don't deal with it as a board, that's what, what the staff deals with.
You want to know my opinion? I think at 60 days, you're cut off and I would waive the first 30 days of late fees. And then the second month, if you're, if you don't make your payment and you're late, then you, you get hit with a one month of late fee. That's, that's my personal recommendation. If you can't pay your bills after 60 days, then you're, you're cut off. And you can work with someone for 60 days and that was.
And maybe what?
Partial payments. They have.
No, I know, it's very tough. Yes, the majority of our customers, we do have a lot that are, that made payment arrangements.
Then your account should be 50%.
Turn them off.
Your payment should be up to 50% of your balance by 60 days to continue on to the next. Does that, do you follow me? I think your account needs to be 50% current beyond 60 days.
There's some consideration to that guidance.
Right, making and attempting and, and working with them on the late fees, that's fine.
But I mean, I would give pretty wide discretion to our staff who knows these people on, on a daily basis to, to make these decisions on their own, quite frankly, you know. We can give them some broad, general guidelines, but I don't, I just don't think we need to be making, you know, hard rules for them, you know. Somebody comes in and is making a good faith effort and they're stuck telling them, sorry, we got to cut your water off because the board made that rule. Yeah, I don't want to be that bad guy, I don't think we need to be, I don't think we should be in that position, you know.
If the, if the customer is in a position, well, you know, I'll talk to so and so, you know, they'll help.
Just, just as a point of reference.
Well worked.
Just as a point of reference, the Public Utility Commission also has.
The Public Utility Commission also has recommendations.
Yes.
And we're supposed to follow those recommendations.
Yes.
They erased all of that with the related COVID.
My suggestion was exactly to come up with what everybody's talking about, come up with a plan. We know how to disconnect people. That's not an issue. Our issue is collecting the money from the few that are not responding because there are people that are responding.
And there are some abusers.
And there are abusers as well. So if we need to determine what the goal is, is the goal to get the money from the ones that aren't paying, or is the goal just to try to bring everybody up to par slowly or whatever, in whatever timeframe we, you guys decide? The point being that you can't do that without a plan to address those different scenarios. And we, I'm reading it here in the minutes, we suggested that last time. So I would like to see a plan of how we're going to address what Herb is talking about, the guy who's attempting to pay, but he's still far behind, you know. I mean, we need to be able to solve that. And I agree with Mr. Lallan that we shouldn't be just putting it all on us, but we do need to share that responsibility, you know. You guys need direction, just like, you know, everybody else. And so I think coming up with a plan, we're talking about that and how we're going to address the people that are so far behind, they'll never catch up. That requires some thought, you know. And I think that we owe it to ourselves to be able to come up with something that addresses all those needs.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. That's what the board wants to do.
We do make a plan with individual customers and, and we see what their ability to pay is, and we ask them to pay within a reasonable amount of time, two months, three months to, to, to get caught up. But what I'm asking here is for you guys to give me back one of our tools that we use to collect.
Right. And let's talk about that because that's a very effective tool. If I get a disconnect notice, I'm going to go down and pay. But not, not everybody's going to react that way. So this is why I say if the goal is to collect the money from those who are not paying and not even making an attempt to pay, I suggested earlier when talking to Eddie that we do a certified letter. That way, we've exhausted at least our legal responsibility to tell them, hey, you have a problem here.
I don't like we had.
If that's the goal, I'm just saying if that's the goal is to collect the money, then I feel that a certified letter would be a good idea. But I have to do that, but if they come up with a plan.
If they had to send out certified letters, disconnecting letters.
I understand that. So I mean, I understand.
And all that does is further delay another two weeks.
Yeah, and people know how to just don't answer a certified letter. I guarantee you, if you're the type of person who is willfully not paying your bill, you know, as Brian can attest to, you know, when you see a certified letter, you don't, you don't sign for it to change, you know, it's something of significance.
The reason I mentioned it, the reason I mentioned it is because if that's the goal is to get our money, then that's what you're going to do. If somebody owes you money, Mr. Lallan, you're going to send them a certified letter.
Do we want to evaluate some of the other policies of some of the local neighborhoods and districts of what they've done and further evaluate what the state, the Texas Water Development Board?
Let's just give Eddie, let's just give Eddie whatever he's asking for, not overcomplicate his life. Let's just keep it simple. Eddie, what do you want us to do?
I want to weigh in, I want to weigh in before we make a decision.
All right, Jason, what do you say?
First of all, I'd like to say that the heart of the reason we had this discussion back before the spike even occurred in our areas is because we didn't want to put our residents in a position where they've got to choose between groceries and have them running one. Now, I do respect the fact that boots on the ground have a more intimate knowledge of who our usual offenders are, but casting that aside just for a moment, I don't want to put the exception to that rule in a position where they're getting their water shut off because they can't, they're not gainfully employed, they've got a shelter in place, they may have COVID. Last thing I want to do is shut water off in that circumstance. So with that in mind, I think we need to treat commercial customers and residential customers differently. Talking about two totally different clients here. A commercial customer, I believe penalties should be in play, you know, to a certain extent, and you can define how that looks. I think commercial customers need to satisfy a larger percentage of their debt to our district or we can use the threat to turn it off. I think residential customers, we shouldn't have penalties in play yet. I like it to the end of the fiscal calendar year. I believe you said that was September the thirtieth. You're asking for the tool of turning off water, and I want to give that to you. But I, unlike my colleague, Dr. Lallan here, I don't want to leave it up to the staff. I would hate to be that poor lady or gentleman answering that phone and saying, you get a discount, but you don't. And I don't, I don't think, I think it's our burden to define that for this district. But I think it should be, you know, I know Scott mentioned fifty percent, if it's satisfied up to fifty percent, I would even look at maybe reducing that to twenty-five percent, right? If twenty-five percent of the money that you owe us is satisfied, or if you've got a plan in place to satisfy that, then we're going to keep your water on. If they're not taking your calls and zero percent is satisfied, then yes, have your tool of shutting their water off.
Jason, if I may say something to you, a commercial account also is just as valuable and just as important if you shut it off because then it doesn't provide any jobs for people, which causes other problems. So they both are of equal significance, commercial and residential. My, my comment, that if you cut the commercial off and you tighten the restrictions on commercial and you relax it on a residential, it's really the same thing. That's my comment.
I hear you. I just think commercial has a better capacity of earning the amount of money to pay a water.
Let's ask, let's ask the person that's in charge of this.
Yeah, that's the face I want to see.
Hi, Manny.
Hi there. I know I missed.
Did you catch the conversation? So we're discussing the, the disconnections due to non-payment and the board was trying to decide whether we should restore this, a part of the service policy and should we restore the late fees as well? Do you have any comments on that?
I, what I think is we should restore maybe part of it, like they shouldn't go beyond a certain point. I think some of these customers are going four months plus, that's too much. We don't have a lot of them, but you know, we don't want their bills to escalate to where up and low after all this gets back into place.
Are these the accounts that would normally leave at that time?
Good. Yes, and then we're stuck with not getting anything. I mean, yes, some of them.
We're stuck with write-offs.
Do have, do have deposits, but it's, some of them are not going to cover it. Most of them are residential.
I think one of the factors that comes to my mind is when you make decisions like this, is if you can, if you can detect some kind of financial stability, and this is very difficult when you can't see that, you know, putting a plan together when there's no, it's hard to see the financial stability, whether it's a commercial or residential account. I mean, I, I agree with it, if you had the disconnect on hand, that is a good tool. I've talked to other mud districts. I talked to one today and they told me we're having the same problem.
You know, it doesn't mean you have to use it, but it's a tool that you have when you need.
Exactly what he said. It doesn't mean you have to use it, but it does work, he said. So I get that part. My concern is that if there is an opportunity to help somebody, do we have a plan in place to do that?
Well, I think.
Yeah.
And that's it. Policy of forbearance if they don't let it get worse than they can. And then reestablish the cutoff policy.
Yeah. I mean, something, you know, and I also agree with Mr. Lallan that the staff is out there, they know, you know, the customers better than anybody else, you know. So you know how much you can push, how much you can push, you know that, that we don't know. So there's some responsibility that needs to be shared here. And so I, I would like to see a plan of how we're going to address the ones that go under the radar or are not going to pay, which is what you're concerned about. You're concerned about people are not paying. Yeah, you're not, we're not concerned about the people that are making payments. We're not, we're concerned about the people that are not even responding. And so, and so I understand using that tool, but if they do make a good faith effort and say, well, I can't, I can't do everything at once, what's the plan?
So that's, that's the plan. So we, the ones that are not responding, not responding to our home calls, our emails, our mail, those are the ones that we want to be able to shut off their water. When they come back to us to restore their water, we're going to have a conversation with them and see what can be.
I think, I think that also, there's also, there's also the.
This item is only for restoring and, and it's not rewriting, it's only for restoring.
I get that, I get that. Yeah, but, but let's assume that you do go there and everything, you know, okay, you're going to get that person back and they're going to say, oh, you, okay, well, I'm going to pay you so much. That's, that's all I'm saying is that we, you guys need to know, okay, how are we going to do this? Because every customer is going to be different. You know, every customer might, like Jason said, they might not even be employed.
But, but this item only puts the tool back in the toolbox. And it doesn't rewrite the policy or change the policy. If we're going to redo that, then we can work on that the next time.
I'm not talking about changing the policy. I'm talking about the person that, that making contact with them has to have the discretion to be able to say, you know what, this is what I can do. That's what I'm talking about.
Can I say something now, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is Carlos. Okay. What I, what I see is that we've always negotiated with the customers, if they can't pay, we help them out and try to do payments and payments. The thing is that we need to get them in. So the only way to get them in and talk about their issues, that we can help out in adjusting their payment and trying to help them out in payments, whatever it takes, we do help them out and do our best to do that for all our customers. And if we can get them into talk and, and we can see what their problems are by turning off the water, we'll get that done and taken care of. But the policy is already written where we, we should be able to handle that in that manner.
We need to amend the policy, we could get to that level next, on the next meeting or next.
Yeah, and that would require some input from you guys at that point, saying, you know, this is what we discovered after we.
But today, this puts the tool back in the toolbox to get the customer to the front door, to get them to the discussion table, to Manny, Manny has, I will vouch for Manny, has given some courtesy calls and notices, hey, you know, you're, you're late or something. And I personally, professionally, that has happened and that, that, you know, and you come in and you take care of it and it gets done. Or you know, or it gets cut off. I mean, that's.
So the question, I guess, is how long do we want to do this? Or just?
Well, the restoration of the disconnection for not, due to non-payment would be permanent. Okay. Right. Now, do you, if you want to, to, to restore the late fees, we can, we can do that immediately or we could waive them for a certain period of time? You know, what period of time is up to?
What I would like to see is, is some feedback, let's say thirty days from now, as to how this, how this.
I think you need to restore the disconnect, you can keep the late fees off the table. That's my honest comment right there.
How about this? How about this for a motion? I, I make a motion that we restore the disconnect, but continue waiving late fees for thirty more days with a reevaluation.
Perfect.
I'll second that.
I think that's a perfect idea.
For the record, Dr. Lallan made a motion to continue the disconnect and reevaluate the late fees for a later thirty-day timeframe, or seconded by Mr. Avalos. Are all those in favor? They are? Are there any opposed, non-motion carries? Thank you. Let's move along, please. Thank you, Manny, for your time. Let's move along to item ten. Consider and discuss for possible approval of the financial reports for May twenty twenty. Everyone had a chance to look at them.
Acknowledged.
Acknowledged by Mr. Houston.
Acknowledged.
Acknowledged by Mr. Avalos. Are all those in favor? They are? Moved along. Thank you. Let's carry along to item twelve. Consider and review expenditures from, excuse me, item eleven. Consider and discuss for possible approval the purchase of a raw water vertical pump or water plant number one.
Chairman, members of the board, we need to replace a pump, essential for water plant one to start functioning again. So we get votes and we are recommending going to pumps of Houston for eleven thousand two hundred dollars.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Houston, seconded by Mr. Avalos. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Any opposed, non-motion carries? Thank you. Item thirteen, consider and remove from, excuse me, item twelve, consider and review expenditures from June sixteenth, twenty twenty, for June thirtieth, twenty twenty. So everyone reviewed. Motion to acknowledge review. Motion made by Mr., for review by Mr. Houston, also reviewed by Mr. Avalos. Of all those, acknowledged for review.
Acknowledged.
Let's have, thank you. Let's move along to item thirteen. Consider and remove from the table the following executive session item under section five five one zero seven four, personal matters table at the regular meeting on June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, deliberation regarding the evaluation of district employee to it, general manager. I think what's, I'd like to personally table all this, do we have counsel here and Mr.?
I don't know if you can table.
I don't know if you can table. Move along. Item thirteen, is that how that goes? I've never tabled a table either. So we go to item fourteen, do we make a motion to table that?
Pass over that.
We pass over that. And item fifteen, consideration and action on executive session if necessary, we pass along on that and the meeting is adjourned. Six thirty-seven PM. Thank you.